...here momentarily and we'll begin very shortly, so bear with us, I apologize. We're running, we're running a little late, that's a heck of a way to run a railroad.
(inaudible)
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize again for the record, it's ten minutes after six and we're supposed to start these meetings at six o'clock, but we ran a little bit late coming out of a pre-commission meeting. But we are delighted that you are here for this meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission. This is our regular meeting for Tuesday, September the seventeenth. We would like to begin tonight as we typically do with an invocation to seek the Lord's guidance and presence here with us and the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag, I want to call on Pastor Bo Turner from Real Life Church and two of his congregation members to come up to the podium. Pastor Turner will give us an invocation and then, hold on Pastor Turner, I gotta, I gotta get you turned on up there, I'm running real late. All right, now, I got you, I got you, I got you Turner, you give us an invocation and then, then we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance?
Can we bow for a moment of prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, we enter your gates this evening with thanksgiving and your courts with praise. We are thankful unto you because we realize that every good and perfect gift comes from you, Father. We ask now, Lord, that you would guide and direct our leadership as they conduct the business of our great community. We thank you for past blessings, we thank you for present blessings, and we thank you, Father, for what you will do in the future for Macon Bibb. We give all this to you in the name of your precious Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated, ladies and gentlemen. Pastor Bo Turner, better known, better known as Pastor Bo, third generation Pentecostal, born into a pastor's home, was accepting the call to ministry in nineteen eighty-eight. He served as state evangelist of the Church of God of Prophecy until nineteen ninety-one. In December two thousand and seven, Pastor Bo, heeding the call of God, moved from South Georgia to Macon, Georgia, to become the senior pastor of Real Life Church, one of the fastest growing churches in the middle Georgia area with over eleven hundred members. Since taking over as senior pastor, he's launched a new television ministry airing on local CTN entitled Living the Real Life. Pastor Bo has married to his lovely wife Melissa twenty-seven years, they have three children, Blake, twenty-five, Dalton, nineteen, and Connor, thirteen. Pastor Bo, thank you so much for all you're doing in our community and thank you for what you're doing there at Real Life Church and for being here tonight, we appreciate it. As I said, he, he brought two of his congregation members with us to lead us in the pledge. First of all was Gerald Acosta, Gerald, are you still here or did you leave? Hey, there he is, Gerald, Gerald Acosta, Gerald is a sixth grader at Howard Middle School. He enjoys learning math and competing on the math team. Gerald has also participated as one of the lead actors in church productions, he enjoys playing chess and video games. And he was joined by Bailey Albritton, Bailey? There you are, good. Bailey, Bailey is a junior at Central High School where she plays the violin in the orchestra. Bailey's been accepted into the dual enrollment program at Central Georgia Technical College in Macon, Bailey wants to become a speech pathologist. Bailey has been a member of Real Life Church for two years and volunteers in real kids' world, which she enjoys. You know, in this day and age when we hear so much bad news about young people and this and that, isn't it refreshing to see such two wonderful young people? And we appreciate them for being here, wish you all the best. So, thank you very much for being here and leading us in the pledge. Good luck on your, on your future endeavors. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. We had a pre-commission meeting on September the third and a regular commission meeting also on September third, those minutes were prepared and distributing, are there any changes or corrections that need to be made? If not, can I get a motion by slashing to second by wind to approve the minutes as written? All in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and both sets of minutes are approved. Next, we have a proclamation that I hope, Rachel, is it, is it down there? And am I to present the proclamation? And this is a proclamation honoring Period Poverty Awareness Month. If you are here tonight for Period Poverty Awareness Month, then please join me at the podium. This is a proclamation that was requested and I'm pleased to have issued it out of the office of the mayor. Uh-oh. Be careful, don't catch that cord right now. Oh, you can't, okay. And this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Macon Periods Easier is an organization made up of nine women and dozens of volunteers working to eliminate period poverty in Macon Bibb County through donations, educational events, community activism, and normalizing the conversation about menstruation. And whereas period poverty is defined as people not having access to menstrual supplies, adequate bathroom facilities, education, and other needs relating to menstruation. And whereas the poverty rate in Macon Bibb County is around twenty-six point seven percent, more than double the national average and eleven points higher than the state average. And whereas people in poverty often miss schools, work, or other important moments in life due to menstruation and related issues. And whereas we believe natural bodily function should not prevent anyone from receiving their education, going to work, or going about their daily lives with dignity and support. And whereas Macon Periods Easier is working hand in hand with other organizations, including the school system, health department, and community groups and individuals to combat this issue head-on. And whereas October is recognized internationally as Period Poverty Awareness Month designated to draw attention to the problem which affects, which not only affects third-world countries, but even nations like the United States of America. Now therefore, I Robert A. B. Rickett do hereby proclaim October twenty nineteen as Period Poverty Awareness Month in Macon Bibb County, and I encourage all citizens to commend Macon Periods Easier for their accomplishments and support of this vital quality of life and basic human rights mission in Macon Bibb County. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed. And Rachel, I know you best of all, so I'd like to present this to you and call on you to perhaps identify somebody else in your group that may want to make a comment or two.
Absolutely, thank you.
But thank you, thank you for what you're doing for us, Rachel, we appreciate the group and we most appreciate it.
Yeah, we were gonna have Paula say a few words.
Good, 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 come right up.
Good afternoon, good evening. Our mission of Macon Periods Easier is to raise awareness of the period poverty in Macon Bibb County among students and others in need, provide menstrual products to schools and other agencies, and normalize the conversation about menstruation through education presentations and events. What we are doing, so far we have collected about over twenty-three thousand units and we have donated twenty-two thousand units to school in other places. We have served over two, over fifty schools in Macon Bibb County. We are encouraging and supporting groups and organizations to facilitate period parties where they collect menstrual supplies, donations. We are distributing the donated menstrual hygiene supplies to schools, centers, and partner organizations. We are providing menstrual education and mentoring. We are researching and collecting data about menstrual needs in Macon Bibb County. How can you help? Please help us and end period poverty in Macon Bibb County by giving us your support. You can donate directly to organizations through our Amazon wishlist, you can search by Macon Periods Easier, you can make, make a tax deductible monetary donation to our fiscal agent, the community partnership, you can host a period party or educational event, or have us host a table at your educational or students' event. You can become a partner organization currently with partnered with United Way of Georgia and the Macon Bibb Health Department. And the easiest way to get involved is normalize periods and discussions of periods in your home, place of worship, civic organization, and school. You can follow us on Facebook and Instagram at Macon Periods Easier and our email is maconperiodseasier@gmail.com. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for what you're doing for us, we appreciate it so much, thank you, absolutely. Get your hand right quick. Come on, bow. All right, did we check the sign-in sheet for anybody that wanted to talk to us about an agenda item? Oh, we did, oh, I should've, I should've looked, okay. This is the time during our agenda where people can sign up to talk to us about an item that is on the agenda for action tonight, so that you can talk to us before we act and vote on it. And so, the first person that signed up, Stanley Stewart, that wants to talk to us about Jeffersonville Road and climate change, climate change isn't on the agenda Stanley, so you may have to postpone that part. I don't think, I didn't see it. Go ahead, you'll recognize for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everybody. Thank you to the, to the mayor and members of the commission and fellow Maconites. I will be brief in my remarks. The two issues that I would like to discuss, as the mayor just mentioned to bring forth this evening, one is the roadwork and community updates. I think that the proposed work to Bass Road is needed. As that area grows, traffic and congestion is a real problem, but the long overdue work to Jeffersonville Road needs a progress report. Such a report would ease the minds of East Macon residents and the completion would be an asset to our nation's newest national park, the Otmoggy Mounds. Macon development overall is my concern, but as we break it down into sectors, each area's growth must spring forth from what is in place already. I propose to the superintendent that once Applewood Middle School is vacant, that a Hilton Garden Inn at the Thompson Athletic Complex is my hope. Such a hotel in East Macon would serve not only the visitors to the athletic complex, but also serve the Forty-Eighth Brigade just next door and be a spillover for the downtown Marriott just a mile or two away. And the completed Jeffersonville Road can and will be an asset to build on for the nearby mounds and national park. The Jeffersonville Road project is crucial to East Macon development under my plan. And which is more, the citizens of that area deserve a completed project, as do the citizens of Bass Road, and for that, for the record, Commissioner Allen has long spoken about the need for a roundabout in his district at a dangerous intersection. Let us connect our cities' neighborhoods through safe and completed roads, sidewalks, and paths. The second issue, if I might say this real quick, about a minute or two, is climate change. Today we reached a record of a hundred and three, the hottest day of the year. For two years in a row, these have been the hottest Septembers on record, two thousand nineteen and two thousand eighteen, since temperatures have been kept at the eighteen-hundreds. Yellowstone today was thirty-six degrees. My second issue of discussion, of course, is the Arctic. One might say, why is Stanley standing in the middle of the government center on the hottest day of the year and talking about the Arctic glaciers? The reason is twofold. Number one, from a climatological standpoint, melting glaciers are a threat to American coastal living. On the Pacific side, Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, LA, San Diego. On the Atlantic side, Boston, New York, DC, Wilmington, Charleston, Savannah, Jacksonville, Daytona, Miami. But which is more, from a national security standpoint, melting glaciers are creating new and quicker waterways, waterways which have quickly been exploited by Vladimir Putin and Russia, which becomes a threat to American interests and our northern European allies.
Right, Mr. Stewart, is that is a non-agenda item?
Yes, sir.
Right, if you would like to be recognized later in the program on the non-agenda items, can we get to it?
Can I come back and say that? Yes.
Yeah, I'll call you back up then.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, no, thank you very much, and we appreciate your comments on the agenda item as well. Brenda Ummes, are you still here with us? Brenda wants to talk to us about the Jeffersonville Road as well, which is, I think, item T on the agenda for tonight, S or T. Ms. Ummes, you're recognized for up to five minutes.
I'm gonna be shorter than that, okay?
That's fine, no, no objection, I don't think.
To the mayor and the commissioners, I've made some statements during your meeting just shortly. I just want to reiterate a request, and as I said before, I will, if need be, I would do it in the formal process as required, but on the OCGA forty-eight eight one twenty-one, it is stated that the proceeds that's stated in your splores should be used for that particular purpose from which the citizen voted upon, and that there should be an audit of the expenditure, the cost, the increased cost with anticipated costs, and that the public should know of this information. I know you're saying, well, all that money has already been spent. Well, there's been nothing given to the public to tell us how much was collected, what it was spent on, well, we know it wasn't spent on Jeffersonville Road because you just started in twenty nineteen. To let us know what happened to this money that was collected in nineteen ninety-four for splores, and it's supposed to be kept in a separate accounting, which records and everything about what you're doing with it, and it's supposed to be some type of oversight to make sure that that kind of money is not commingled, it's not to be used with other things for other purposes unless it bought back to another vote. So, there's a need, we started the project, we would like for it to be completed. I have concern, grave concern, that, thank you, I have grave concern that this, I think the county attorney made, kinda informed us that the money for the resolution that Ms. Lucas presented would come from the county coffers, not from the funds collected from the state through the sales. I have concern about that when, just a couple of weeks ago, you were debating the issue of giving employees a thousand dollar bonus and you couldn't give them a raise, then where are you gonna find millions of dollars to complete a road project? So, if we can just kinda give the public the information that the law requires us to have, and also to let us know, as I think Mr. Watkins requested, a certain time period, not that time matters, but a time period that we would get the information so we can keep this project moving and no more further delay. Twenty-five years is a long time. Unlike my partner, Lonzie Edwards, who really advocated for this, I would like to see it completed in my lifetime.
Thank you, Ms. Ummes, we, we appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Next, Mr. Willie Frazier also wants to address Jeffersonville Road. Mr. Frazier, thank you for being here, sir, you're recognized for up to five minutes. That's all I give our attention to, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier, if you'd address your comments to the chair, please, sir.
Sir, appreciate another opportunity to talk about this, Mayor. I've heard all of the concerns about the Jeffersonville Road project, and I have a concern about it because my church is right on Jeffersonville Road. As a matter of fact, when you all had the groundbreaking on Jeffersonville Road, me and a lot of my parishioners was up under the tent there when you had the groundbreaking to do that project. And we jumped and we shouted and we prayed and we did all kind of things because finally this had became a project that you promised us that you was getting ready to do. My pastor asks me every week to come in and talk to you, some of the commissioners, and I haven't done that yet, but I'm doing that now because the ditch that runs across our church has grown up so high you can't hardly see the church, that you all put stabs down and different stuff down in order to do that area, and it's still there. We're pushing to try to get this project to go ahead and be done, and not only just the Millerfield Road, but all the way down to the end of the project where you said to stop because I feel like it would be a disdain and be unfair to finish that road for these people on this side of Jeffersonville Road and not for the other side, you can't be partial. If you're gonna do it, I feel like it need to be taken all the way because if you do it for us and our church and that side of Jeffersonville Road, then the other side gonna be in here with the same issue, giving you another issue. So, let's try to do that for everybody. I understand the other project that need to be done, but always, let's get one project done and let's get that project finished, not started, because a lot of things that we start and we don't finish is the reason why people wind up in here giving us the blues. So, let's try to at least finish a project. We want the Jeffersonville Road project finished, please, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frazier, we appreciate you being here. Ms. Sarah Hunt, Ms. Hunt, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. You also want to talk to us about both Bass Road and Jeffersonville Road. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
At the time we passed the splores, Bass Road was not in the picture, but Jeffersonville Road was. I've been here forty-six years, twenty-four of those years you've been talking about doing Jeffersonville Road. The five million dollars you're talking about taking out of splores money for Bass Road? Bass Road was not a project when we approved any of the splores that the money is coming out of. We expect, when I say we, I'm talking about the citizens of Macon, Georgia, we expect for Jeffersonville Road to be completed and not half-done like you did Law Cabin Road. We expect for you, as our commissioners that we have put in place, to see this project through before you move to Bass Road. Now, many times when I get up and talk and we ask you to do these things, you don't take it serious. But I promise you, as Ms. Ummes has asked for an audit of all of the splores monies that have been taken up, we want an audit. We want to know how every dime has been spent, every project that it has been spent on, who you paid to do the projects, and who had the oversight on these projects being completed. You have not been fair to your citizens, you have not given us this information, and we are not gonna vote for another splores, E-splores, S-splores, whatever kind of splores you bring, we not passing another splores until we get accounting on this and Jeffersonville Road is completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Finally, Mr. Mike Odom wants to talk to us about Bowden Golf Course, we've got an item on the agenda for Bowden Golf Course. Mr. Odom, good to see you, sir, you're recognized for up to five minutes.
Mayor, I've been absent for quite a while, good to be back. Mr. Mayor, before I present on Bowden Golf Course, I'd like for you to censure Mr. Tillman and Mr. Watkins, they were rudely violating your code of conduct by chatting among themselves while Brenda was talking. You explicitly read that out to all of us and they were violating your code of conduct.
Thank you for helping me do, do my job, Mr. Odom and, and...
Well, you should've stopped them.
Thank you, Mr. Odom, I appreciate it. Go ahead, sir.
All right, let me talk about Bowden Golf Course. I've got all your financial audits for the last several years, of course FY nineteen is not complete. Two years ago, Bowden Golf Course lost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cash just to cover operations, you spent almost three hundred thousand dollars of splores monies to upgrade the golf course, that's three-quarters of a million dollars. A year ago, it lost another three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of cash to support operations. Now, that means you spent more than you took in for fees and golf carts and stuff. Those two years, Bowden lost one point one million dollars. FY nineteen's not in. Now you're contemplating spending another hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars on golf carts. There's no way you're gonna break even this year, so it's, you're probably gonna be close to a million and a half dollars in three years on that golf course. Are you, is this commission honestly telling this public that that, there's no higher priority for a hundred and fif, one point five million dollars of cash in this county than for people to go play golf? I have a real hard time with that. I, I just urge you to vote no on this. I have urged you before to shut this golf course down and sell the land, put that cash losses plus cash proceeds into the general fund for operational expenses. Put this money toward first responders, put it toward additional deputies on the highway to be preventative for crimes and, and murders, for equipment for firefighters. Look, when a golf course is closed, people go play golf elsewhere. When somebody's murdered, they don't go home, they go to the morgue. So, a golf course, you finish, you finish the eighteenth hole. Anecdotally, the clubhouse is called the nineteenth hole. You keep spending like this, this chamber's gotta be renamed to the fool's hole. So, please stop throwing money at this golf course, there are other options to, for recreation, and the money is needed more desperately somewhere else. So, I urge you to vote no on this tonight, and I urge that operations and finance bring forth a motion to close this golf course and sell it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Odom, appreciate you being here and appreciate your, your comments. That's all of the people that we have that have signed up to talk about an agenda item, and for those of you who signed up to talk to us about a non-agenda item, we'll call on you a little bit later in the program. We move on now to reports from our standing committees. I'm sorry, may I approach him?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move at this time that we add item B in new business to tonight's agenda. I think, I think it's under new business. We, this, correction, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to pull item B, remove it off the table or the voted election day off the table, like a motion to remove it off the table, sir.
It's, it's on the agenda under new business for referral to a committee, do you not want it referred to a committee?
What we wanted to do, Mr. Mayor, is first of all, untable it and look to add the, because it's, the, the, that's the actual amendment, it's not the original motion that was tabled. So, we wanted to, first of all, remove it from the table and then add item B in new business to the agenda for, for, for action tonight and/or discussion.
Well, somebody's gonna have to, somebody's gonna have to help me recor-
So a golf course, you finish, you finish the eighteenth hole. Anecdotally, the clubhouse is called the nineteenth hole. You keep spending like this, this chamber's gotta be renamed to the fool's hole. So please stop throwing money at this golf course. There are other options for recreation, and the money is needed more desperately somewhere else. So I urge you to vote no on this tonight, and I urge that Operations and Finance bring forth a motion to close this golf course and sell it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. Appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. That's all of the people that we have that have signed up to talk about an agenda item, and for those of you who signed up to talk to us about a non-agenda item, we'll call on you a little bit later in the program. We move on now to reports from our standing committees. I'm sorry. May I approach him?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Mayor, I'd like to move at this time that we add Item B in New Business to tonight's agenda. I think it's under New Business. We, correction, Ms. Mayor, we'd like to pull Item B, remove it off the table or the voted election day off the table, like a motion to remove it off the table, sir.
It's on the agenda under New Business for referral to a committee. Do you not want it referred to a committee?
What we wanted to do, Ms. Mayor, is first of all, untable it and look to add the, because it's, that's the actual amendment, it's not the original motion that was tabled. So we wanted to, first of all, remove it from the table and then add Item B in New Business to the agenda for action tonight and/or discussion.
Well, somebody's gonna have to, somebody's gonna have to help me recall.
This, well, it looked like we just locked.
Somebody's gonna have to help me recall when this resolution was first discussed in which committee. Has it been to, has it been to a committee yet? Maybe I'm, which committee did it go to?
Ms. Mayor, it's actually in Committee of the Whole.
Committee of the Whole, Mr.?
I withdraw the, I withdrawed the motion, and maybe the gentleman can come back in the room.
Motion withdrawn. Moving on with the agenda, the next is reports from our standing committees. Operations and Finance Committee, that report will be given to us, I presume, by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on September 10th, 2019, and took the following actions. The committee approved a lease agreement with, for utility vehicles for Bowden Golf Course in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. We approved a lease agreement with RICO for copier machines for two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. We entered an agreement with the Community Enhancement Authority for maintenance of Jefferson Lone Park and Linear Park, which includes a one-time, for, okay. We approved an agreement with the Community Enhancement Authority for a maintenance agreement with Jefferson Lone Park and Linear Park, which include a one-time initial maintenance fee of eighty-five hundred dollars and a yearly maintenance fee of forty-one thousand dollars and administrative fee of fifty-eight hundred dollars and a liability fee of seven hundred and twenty. An installment agreement with Dale Financial for one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars over a three-year, over three years. What is happening? I'm sorry, excuse me. We approved an installment agreement with Dale Financial for one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for a three-year contract. We approved an agreement with Corrick Health for four million dollars to approve medical and mental health services for inmates. And we approved an agreement with Safe Bill to provide an extension through December 31st, 2019, at a cost not to exceed ninety-four thousand dollars. The committee approved the following splosh projects. An agreement with Skyline Construction Services for repairs to the city auditorium roof at a cost of four hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred dollars. A sales agreement with Miracle Recreation Company for recreation equipment at Lake Tobasaki in the amount of two hundred thousand, two hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. An agreement with GDOT for the Bass Road widening project with GDOT funding for thirty million dollars and a Macon Bib match of approximately five point three million dollars. The committee approved the five-year short-term work program and capital improvements update. The committee accepted a health promotion and well-being grant from ACCG in the amount of fifteen thousand and a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council's Victims of Crime Act in the amount of twenty-five thousand with six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in matching funds from the Solicitor General. The committee approved the following supplemental appropriations. The transfer of fifty-one thousand dollars appropriated to the Macon Arts Alliance for the Main Street's Macon Christmas Light Show was transferred to Newtown, Macon. The transfer of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars from fund balance to the Community Enhancement Authority to provide maintenance for the Jefferson Lone and Linear Park, to appropriate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from splosh to the John Drew Tennis Center for new LED lighting and resurfacing of the tennis court. It approved amending the code to add Chapter 29 to be known as Article 11, the wireless facilities and antennas section. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next is the Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us, I presume, by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on September 10th, 2019, and took the following action. The committee approved the reappointment of George Thomas to the Macon Bib County Board of Tax Assessors. The committee heard a report from Ethiel Garland, who's the Director of Historic Macon, and from Carol Kelly, County Extension Coordinator, on a proposed use for the train recreation center. The committee approved naming the park located at 834 Lenmore Avenue as the Frankie Lewis Memorial Park, and I believe two of her sons are here tonight. That is sponsored by Commissioner Schlesinger, and it's my honor to sign on as a co-sponsor. We urge other commissioners to sign on as well. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. No report from Public Safety, I understand, so that brings us next then to Facilities and Engineering, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Facilities and Engineering met on September 10th, along with the other committees, and took the following action. The committee approved the transfer of approximately two point three-five acres containing and adjoining the former Virgil Powers School Building located at 1120 Second Street to the Urban Development Authority. That was the one item we voted on. That completes the report.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. These are alcohol beverage license applications. There are five of them that were previously discussed. Each of the applications is accompanied by all of the requisite information that's supposed to be there. That is a sheriff's certification of a satisfactory background check of the applicant, the certification from business development services that the appropriate license fees have been tendered for the alcoholic beverages to be sold, a certificate from planning and zoning that the location complies with planning and zoning requirements, a certification from the County Engineers Office that the location of the establishment satisfies all of the separation distance requirements, and finally, a copy of the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph to give the public notice. So each of these applications has all of that documentation. The first license application is by Hawkinsville Management LLC. The agent's name is Denise Patel. It is at 7285 Hawkinsville Road, and the request is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. This is a change of ownership that is requiring the new license, so it's apparently an existing location. The next is Mohammed Khan. The business name is K and H Enterprises, 3495 LLC. It's located at 3495 Williamson Road, Suite B, and it is for beer and wine package sales to go from that location. The third is by Darren Ford. The business name is C Barrel Incorporated, doing business as Brookhaven. It's at 401 Cherry Street, Suite 101, and it is for liquor, mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on premises at that location. And the fourth is by Alitha Pool, is your applicant. The business name is Midtown Daiquiri Bar and Grill LLC. It's located at 4376 Log Cabin Drive. It is for liquor, mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on the premise at that location. And the fifth and final license application is by Beverly M. Davis. The business name is Vista Bar and Lounge. It is located at 3642 West Napier Avenue, and it is for liquor, mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on the premises at that location. The Committee of the Whole recommends approval of these five licenses. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of the licenses signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those licenses will be issued as requested. That brings us now to Old Business. Excuse me. And the first item of Old Business is an appointment to, or a reappointment to the Board of Tax Assessors, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bib County Commission approving the reappointment of George Thomas to the Macon Bib County Board of Tax Assessors and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to name a park in honor of Frankie Everett Lewis, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bib County Commission to name the park located at 834 Lenmore Avenue, the Frankie Everett Lewis Memorial Park, and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Schlesinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a nice picture that you put up there. You may want to put that back up. Frankie Lewis was a fixture here at our commission meetings, as well as many of our committee meetings as well. She did so much for this community, and this playground was really her vision. She said that, you know, the children who live in and around Houston Avenue really have no place to go. Memorial Gym was the closest recreation place, and that's a pretty good walk from there. So she envisioned putting up a playground located at 834 Lenmore Avenue, solicited my help as the Commissioner for District 2. We took down seven structures on that property, and she also was able to get the house that was next to the property as a community center. I mean, she did so much else for the, for the community. The gospel concert during Cherry Blossom is now really a signature event. I mean, it's really amazing how she took that idea and made it into something that's very, very, very special within the context of that festival. And I believe it was Ms. Sarah Hunt who first suggested that we name the playground, which has yet to be built, but it's on the schedule, after Frankie Lewis. Her son's family are here with us. They miss her dearly. We miss her dearly. But by doing this, we will preserve her memory for generations to come for what she did for this community. So it was my pleasure to sponsor this with Ms. Lucas, and I think it's a fitting tribute to a wonderful woman who is tragically no longer with us, but whose blessing will abound, as I said, from generations to come.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to transfer the Virgil Powers School Building property to the Urban Development Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bib County Commission to authorize the mayor to transfer approximately two point three-five acres containing and adjoining the former Virgil Powers School Building located at 1120 Second Street to the Urban Development Authority and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to lease some golf carts for the Bowden Golf Course, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bib County Commission to authorize and approve the lease of sixty golf carts and four utility vehicles for the Bowden Golf Course in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents from Textron Specialized Vehicles to be paid by general funds and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, I think I've got your light on first, sir.
You know, Bowden Golf Course is a wonderful facility, which we've put a lot of money into, but I also have reservations about the amount of money that it's costing to run it each and every year. Of course, if you're gonna operate a golf course, you've got to have, you've got to have golf carts. You've got, that's just part of it. So if you're gonna run it, you gotta have the golf carts. I, for one, are looking in the future of possibly we could find somebody that would lease that from us. I don't know that we could sell it. We might could. Somebody who would lease it and run it, and we could have a contractual arrangement with them. But I'll vote for the golf carts tonight, just because if you're gonna have it, you've gotta run it, you've gotta run it like it's supposed to be run. But it is a great concern about the amount of money. Mr. Odom's figures are correct, and it's just, it's a growing bill, and if we can ever get it back where it would break even, not that we're supposed to make money on recreation. We're not, but you hate to lose so much money when we've got so many other needs that these dollars could go to. Are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Schlesinger, got your light on next, sir. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It is Commissioner Lucas. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at this, not that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I should be looking at you.
Right. Some people talk just to hear themselves talk, and a lot of times, people just, you know, they just get so used and they just, just love to see themselves on TV until, you know, they just come up and make up stuff, you know, just to keep things stirred up, I guess, and insult members of the commission too, who work very, very hard for our two dollars and eighty cents an hour. Back to the issue at hand, we're talking about sixty golf carts. Those golf carts, we had an extensive report in our committee on last Tuesday, and we asked many of the questions that you have in your mind about Bowden. What progress is being made? There's a lot that's going on at Bowden, and I would encourage each of you to go out and see the progress that's being made. We know that there are facilities that are losing money. There are many of them that I personally don't think we need to be funding, but this is our only municipal golf course. This is a historic course. It has the marker. It's on the National Register of Historic Places, and it has a number of distinctions, and you will find out about those if you just Google Bowden Golf Course, Historic Bowden, you will find out those things. But we were given a report as to the rebuilding of that golf course, the improvements. I myself have ridden through. I didn't know all that I was looking at, but I knew it looked good. I know where there used to be barren spaces. I know it's pretty and green, and golfers tell me that's the way, anybody golf up here? That's, they tell me that's the way it's supposed. All I know is it's making improvement, and all I can tell you is that there's less of your money that's having to be spent at Bowden this year than in previous years. So that's the right direction, and I think that you support continuing to provide golf. The one other very good thing about Bowden is that many of our young people are being channeled into Bowden to learn and to appreciate and to love the game of golf, which adds to what our young people can get involved in. And I think you're, you- And I think you're happy about that. I know that I am. We have some young people who have received golf scholarships. George Muhammad's son is in college now on a golf scholarship that he earned mainly because of his involvement and training through Bowden Golf Course, and there are others who have received golf scholarships, and they started at Bowden. So there are a lot of pluses. This is slow progress, but I guarantee you, from the report that we got, there is progress. And so it's, I'm going to be voting in favor of the 60 golf carts. The question was asked why we have to have that many. And the reason is that if there's a large tournament, you don't want to have to go and rent additional golf carts. And so it's better to have in-house what you need, and these are replacements, from what I understand, for leases that have run out. So I just wanted to share that information and ask you to stay with this golf course. It does not need to be sold. It does not need to be leased to anyone. It needs to be run. We have placed it under, back under, our Parks and Recreation Department, very capably run by Robert Walker, who is overseeing and making steady progress with the employees there at Bowden. So I would encourage you to continue your support, and I'm going to be voting for the lease of these 60 golf carts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Wynn, I got your light on next.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, share the concern of the loss of money at this facility. I know it's our only municipal golf course, and that's something that we should consider. We've spent thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve this golf course in the last few years. It's lost money and lost money and lost money, and as of this point, it's losing money again, a lot of money. And one of our speakers mentioned how much money this would save if we didn't have this golf course, and that is a fact, that if we didn't have this golf course, we would save some money. This lease is to replace the lease of golf carts that we currently have. It's a four-year lease. I like to break things down into pockets, and if you take that $158,000 and divide it out by four years, you're spending about $39,500 for the golf carts for the next four years. However, I'd like to also say that we can get out of this lease if we need to at some point. We'd have to pay a little penalty, but there is an out clause in this lease should the golf course close for any reason or be sold or whatever could happen to it. But you have to look at things. You have to look at what this county is spending on this facility, and if it keeps bleeding, you have to look at, should we stop the bleeding? What should we do about that? Having said this, I'm going to vote for this. I'm going to vote to approve this, but I am very concerned about the amount of money this course continues to lose. And I know that we're not supposed to say this is something that makes money. Breaking even would be really nice. Before the Golf Pro left last week when he was speaking to us, I said, we've got to figure out how to make more money out there, more people to come play, more membership fees, and golf hole sponsorships, which he said he's looking into, and I said I'd be glad to help him with that. That all adds up to more money that we can put in there to help fray the cost of this golf course. But I will vote in favor of this because we have spent a lot of money already, although it's still losing money again this year. We've had a bad summer. We have to admit that. Who wants to play out in the open golf course with the heat that we've had? And then we had a shortened year because some of the work wasn't completed. I'll give it all that. Let's give it another year or two and see how it does, but it continues to lose money, and we really need to look at it in the future. Are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Commissioner Watkins, got your light on next, sir.
Thank you, sir. To be brief, this is a multi-year contract for golf courses, I mean, for golf carts. This is a renewal of a contract that is an essential part of golf service provision. No golf carts, we're not going to make anywhere near the amount of money that we should make. And to the money, we have spent a significant amount of our splash dollars investing and improving that facility. And although it is still in the red, it is losing less money now than it's lost in previous years. We're trending correctly. Last, this July was a better turnout and rounds played than last July. It's not going to correct itself overnight, but we have made the right, we've invested in our product, and we are marketing, and we're seeing increases. They're marginal increases, but they're increases nonetheless. This is, again, pretty much a standard contract for the golf course. Every three or four years, we need to get, renew our lease with the golf carts because the batteries go dead on them. And this is that. Again, these golf carts, we're investing now, but they will last us for many years in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. No other lights on, but I was going to follow up on Commissioner Wynn's calculations. If you take the $39,500 per year and divide it by 60, which is the number of carts that we get, $655 per cart. And I do remember what the pro told us, if you don't have good carts, you're not going to be able to track tournaments, and tournaments is a major factor in the number of rounds played, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think all of that bears consideration. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, in case y'all forgot, this is for golf carts at Bowden. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is item E, and it is a master lease agreement for copiers for Macon Bibb County, all of the departments, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a master lease agreement with Rycon for copier machines in the amount not to exceed $264,000 for the Macon Bibb County Government, with individual leases to be paid from individual departments, budgeted line item funds, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an agreement to contract with the Community Enhancement Authority for maintenance of Jefferson Lawn Park and Linear Park, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Community Enhancement Authority to provide for maintenance of the Jefferson Lawn Park and Linear Park. Which shall include a one-time initial maintenance fee of $8,500, a yearly maintenance fee of $41,000, a yearly administrative fee of $5,580, and a yearly commercial liability fee of $720, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Wynn, got your light on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, here we go, spending more money. I find that this amount of money for cutting grass is absurd, because I've checked around. I ask, I actually went out and met with Chris James Carter out there at the Little Richard House and Tedra Hudson. He says when they cut the grass, and the city of Macon, by the way, is doing this quite well, that both parks are cut and look nice, and we can continue doing that. This total amount of what we're about to pay for is $55,800. You can get grass cut for a lot less than $41,000, which is what this contract calls for. If you have a contract with someone, you don't have to have an administrator of that contract to cut grass. The people that the contractors, we have supervisors to oversee cutting grass. You don't need a liability policy. They have one to cover their work. I don't know what this $8,500 for, the pre-whatever it is, but I went out there and looked, and there's one broken concrete bench in one of the parks. That's not $8,500 worth of work, I'm sorry. But we can get the grass cut here, continue to have it cut by the city. We can use some of that money maybe to hire somebody else to come on board to help, but Mr. Carter said that he watched them cut grass, and it took all of about 45 minutes to an hour to cut the Jefferson Lawn Park, which is in front of the Little Richard House. And of course, that was staff with four or five people cutting grass, but still, I think this is ridiculous amount. You can probably go out there and find some local folks that'll do it for half that amount and cut that grass and do just as good a job. So I just, I'm not going to vote in favor of this. I think that's a ridiculous amount. And we don't need an administration fee. We don't need the insurance. We just don't need it, folks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. I've got Commissioner Jones, your light on next.
Yes, sir. I agree with Commissioner Wynn. The numbers don't make a lot of sense. We're not being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And then you've got item which calls for an additional $31,800 for basically the same thing. So I think we're overpaying. We're not being good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. I can't support those numbers. We don't need an administration fee, and she knows more about the insurance because she comes from the insurance industry. So I think she's right on that as well. Are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Watkins, got your light on next, sir.
And the caption, it's part of what gave me pause when I was reading it earlier. The caption provides way too much detail. The contract with the Community Enhancement Authority is for $55,000 and some odd dollars, and this is the breakdown of their budget on what would happen with that $55 and some odd dollars. $41 directly to the maintenance and the rest of it, administrative fees and the whatnot. Capacity is an issue in Macon Bibb County when it comes to right-of-way maintenance, maintenance of fields, parks, and green space. We have a capacity issue between Jefferson Lawn Park and the Linear Park. That is a vast increase of what that same crew of three or four people are responsible for. And if we are going to maintain these new spaces in addition to the quality that we have maintained, the rest of the area, we're either going to face with in-house doing it, which is adding additional staff, which I believe the county manager and possibly that department had alluded to in order to maintain this, because actually the state has been very much a part of this. The actual maintenance of this, they would need an extra staff in-house, one staff member for us, average of $50,000. But also, in that $8,000 of initial maintenance, it also is not just the benches. It is, I believe, the 100-plus trash cans that have had the liners removed, wood chips, edging, a whole bunch of stuff that go with maintaining a park. This isn't actually that bad of a way to get it done. We have a park that needs maintenance. The community that's across the street from it is willing to do it. I'm curious, you guys have talked about numbers. Have you, I mean, are we talking about an extra, less $10,000 is the difference between? This being a reasonable number and an unreasonable number?
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Wynn, got your light on again.
Just to follow up with Commissioner Watkins, this currently is being done in-house, and it's being done fine. I've been by there twice in the last month, again today, and that grass is cut. It's neat. The only thing that needs to be taken care of is the little garden spot they have, which the community is supposed to be working in, and there's not. By the way, the sprinklers were running today full force on that garden spot, black plastic that's covering those garden spots that aren't being used. And I asked them why they can't turn the water off. They don't even have the key to turn the water off. They gave it to somebody else. So we're wasting water out there right now. I just, I cannot believe that we cannot find somebody else for less than $41,000. If anybody's watching this on the TV, just tell me if you can do these two parks for less than $41,000 a year, and I bet you'll find that. And I also think that that fee, that administration fee, if you hire somebody as a contract, under contract, which is what they're doing, they told me this is a contract, there should not be an administration fee. That person has supervisors to watch their people doing what they're doing. They should not have to have that fee. They should not have to have the insurance fee. I don't know where these numbers come from, and $8,500 you're talking about, the trashcan liners are gone. They're not going to put any more in there because people steal them. That's the problem out there. That's what they told us, they steal them. So they're not going to put the liners in them. So I guess somebody just has to go buy public works, or somebody has to pick up the trash like they do everywhere else. But this figure, this figure is ridiculous. And you know, do you realize, and when you go look at welfare services, that we spend more with the Community Enhancement Authority than we spend for Citizens Advocacy, Meals on Wheels, Middle Georgia Food Bank, Burial Services, and Economic Opportunity Council, excuse me, all of those, we spend more on those welfare services that can give more to this community as a whole than the Community Enhancement Authority does for small neighborhood areas. So we're spending money, and we keep adding to the budget of the Community Enhancement Authority every few months, it seems like it, and I'm tired of it. I yield.
Commissioner Watkins?
It just strikes me that the issue isn't so much the work that needs to be done or whether or not the number is valid, as much as some type of issue with the Community Enhancement Authority being responsible for said work is what just strikes me as a reoccurring theme here. I recognize them as a community organization or agency appointed by the state to alleviate Actually being responsible for direct services. They're managing a property for us, which is a direct contract, and now they're trying to manage parks, which is a direct contract for service. So I'm just curious, is it the service or the organization? This just keeps on being a reoccurring theme.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Jones, got your light on again.
Answer, Commissioner Watkins, for me personally, I'd say it's both, because we got off on the wrong foot with the Community Enhancement Authority when we had an elected official who was serving as the executive director, being paid $65,000, who's supposed to be doing something for the good of the community. Got off on the wrong foot to start with, made people suspicious of what are these dollars going towards and who's paying for what. But these numbers are not cost-effective, bottom line. These numbers are not cost-effective, what it takes to maintain that park, and I don't think you have, and all you got to do is check with some other folks. I think you'd get some much better prices. So the liners, you said, that's not a cost anymore, because as we were told on our tour, that they were ripped off. They were moved within an hour or two of being put there, so they're gone. And what I heard from the county manager was, well, we're not going to replace them because they'll just get ripped off again. Didn't you hear that?
Commissioner Jones has the floor, and then Commissioner Wynn is next, and I'll come back around to you, sir. Commissioner Wynn, you're right.
Yes, sir. In response to the concerns of Commissioner Watkins, my concern at this point is with the money. We can get this done, this service done, for a lot less than. Community Enhancement Authority, yes, Commissioner Jones made the point that we started off on the wrong foot with them. I don't want to keep traveling down that path, because I want to see the money spent properly. I'd like to see the contract for this $41,000, and I'd really like somebody to call me and tell me that they can do it for a lot less, because I want to let you know who that is. That we don't need to waste money when we can save it. We can give it to other good things that this community needs. We can give some of that money back to the other agencies like Citizens Advocacy or something like that, or the Food Bank, or the Meals on Wheels. I don't think we need to be wasting money, and this is a waste of money to do it this way. That's the bottom line, the money.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Commissioner Watkins, you got something else?
I'm hopeful that I misunderstood or we've misunderstood it as a body. Linear Park is a new park in my community. It has maybe 100 trash cans in it. I don't care if they were stolen. I don't care which crackhead did it or why it happened. The park in my community will have trash bags like trash cans are supposed to have. Like, we're not going to be that cheap as an organization where we can't afford to provide trash bag liners, so stuff got to be all on the ground and nasty. That is a community of people. We're going to do better than that. Like, if you think it's something that's able to be cut from the budget, I strongly disagree. Like, no, no.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. We've had, I think we've had enough back and forth, have we not? Well, like I said...
They're back in there. No, but they're...
Right. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, so all those in favor of the resolution signify by raising your hand. Let me count the hands of those that favor this. Let me count the hands of those that favor this. One, two, three, four, five. Let me get those that are opposed. Raise your hand. Five to two. So the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Five to two. All right. Item G is a supplemental appropriation for the Community Enhancement Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars from fund balance in the FY twenty budget for the purpose of providing the necessary funding for the Macon Bibb County Community Enhancement Authority to provide maintenance of the Jefferson Long Park and Linear Park for the fiscal year 2020 and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got two no's, so five to two. That is adopted. The ayes have it, five to two on that as well. All right. That moves us to item H, which is a new contract for Dell, with Dell Financial Services for some computer software. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a renewal installment agreement with Dell Financial Services LLC in the amount of forty-four million, oh, I'm sorry, forty-fourth. I made it go up. I made it go up. Calm down. Forty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents per year for three years for a total of a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-two cents for the purpose of Dell VM Ware software and support to be paid from the IT systems and network repair and maintenance, software budget line item, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to provide for the healthcare down at the law enforcement center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to an agreement with Correct Health Bibb LLC in the amount of approximately four million, four hundred thousand nine hundred four million, four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents payable from the Sheriff's Office Correction Budget Medical Services and Mental Health Services line items to continue to provide medical and mental health services for inmates of Macon Bibb County and Bibb County Sheriff's Office from January the first, two thousand and nineteen, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next is item J, which is an extension of the agreement with Safe Built. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to Macon Bibb County's agreement with Safe Built Georgia LLC to provide for the extension thereof through and including December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, at an additional cost not to exceed ninety-four thousand dollars per two months and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Nguyen?
Mr. Mayor, are we sure that this won't be extended further? I mean, we keep extending this amount and I just worry about it's gonna be extended another two months, four months. And it says up to ninety-four thousand. Is it possible that we may have less than that in expenses? But as far as extending it, we've extended it. Is this the second time? Or first, just the first?
No, we amended it. The first time to add a building officer, a building compliance officer, that was the First Amendment. But this is to amend it, and we're doing this because we had to recall the RFP or RFQ that was put out and make a technical correction in that and put it back out. So this is to continue, so we'll have a continuous service for building inspection.
But it is an extension of that.
It is a two-month extension, but like I said, that's because of the RFP had to be recalled and corrected and put back out.
Sure this will be the last extension?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I can't guarantee you that, but we're trying mighty hard. We're trying.
Okay, there goes my.
We're trying mighty hard. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a contract for some repairs to the roof at the Macon City Auditorium, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Skyland Construction Services Incorporated for four hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred dollars to be paid from SPOSS bond proceeds and our SPOSS revenues for the purpose of repairing the Macon City Auditorium roof and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve purchase and sale of some playground equipment, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase and sales agreement with Miracle Recreation Equipment Company in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents for the purchase of recreation equipment for Lake Tobysavki to be paid from SPOSS bond revenues and our SPOSS bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution concerning Bass Road and to indicate concurrence with the Georgia Department of Transportation for funding, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation to receive funding for the proposed Bass Road widening project capped at the total amount of thirty million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seven cents with local funds in the amount of five million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars to be paid by SPOSS bond proceeds and our SPOSS revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, I think I've got your light on now.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna vote in favor of the Bass Road widening project. I was one of the ones, when it came up, when we were developing a list of the projects that were gonna be voted on, Bass Road was one of those projects. I also want to remind everyone that we have had extensive discussion about Jeffersonville Road, which is a project that needs to be completed. I'm, you know, there's some people who are saying, well, we don't need to support anything else until we get Jeffersonville Road done. I think we can do both things at the same time, and I am encouraged that my fellow commissioners are gonna work along with us and the administration is going to get to work and come up with a plan, Mr. Mayor, yeah, to so that we can complete Jeffersonville Road. There's a lot of work going on out there now, and the people are very, very pleased. Even though it's disruptive, even though it's inconvenient, people are really pleased to see it after twenty or twenty-five years. However, when they see things like us approving, even though we know that the thirty million dollars is gonna be state money, we're still coming up with five million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars as our share of that, for that project. It needs to be done. We have had a number of serious accidents on Bass Road. There's a lot of development out there, so I'm gonna support that because I supported it when we were getting ready to push for a yes vote on the whole SPOSS issue. But I am also going to call on each and every one of you to stick with the folks on the east side and all who use Jeffersonville Road to make sure that that other part is not left undone. And so I'm pledging my support here. And I'm just going to trust that my fellow commissioners or men and lady of their word and will make sure that this gets done. And I have been assured that the mayor and his staff are going to be working on this, what is it, ninety days? To bring back what will happen as far as Jeffersonville Road. I'm going back and forth from Bass to Jeffersonville Road. So anyway, that's, those are, those are my comments. I'm gonna support this tonight because it needs to be done. We need to have safe roads to travel all over the community, and certainly Bass Road does need to be done. But we also are working full speed ahead on the remainder of Jeffersonville Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Nguyen, I got your light on next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the, this resolution. It needs to be done. It's ten years overdue. And the Jeffersonville Road expansion and completion is way overdue. I mean, it's longer than ten years. So I certainly support completing that. You have my word that we will go forward with that because it's longer overdue than Bass Road. But Bass Road is certainly one of our major thoroughfares right now. And with the new stores opening over there, I was over there this past week and I met the manager and general, regional manager of Home Goods, and he said, the first thing he said to me is that if you're a commissioner, you need to do something about that road out there. And I said, we are. We're working towards that, but it's still gonna take several years. But we want the people in East Macon to have their road completed and want them to drive over to Bass Road and shop with us when our road's completed, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. No further lights are on. Assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next item N is a five-term, excuse me, five-year short-term work program and capital improvements update. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and adopting the Macon Bibb County Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element Update and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. And next is a resolution to accept a well-being grant, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept a health promotion and well-being grant from the ACCG Group Health Benefits Program in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, got your light on again.
Yeah, thank you. I am gonna support this acceptance of this grant, and it falls right in line with what some of us feel is a focus in your Health Committee that Commissioner Allen proposed and you accepted and approved. That committee has endorsed wellness for our employees and has kind of said to the administration and to us that they want that as a focus. As a matter of fact, our healthcare advisors have said that we need to focus in on the wellness as a way of lowering our healthcare costs. And I think this grant can go a long way towards support for a Civic Engagement and Wellness Day for our employees, which is an item that we have been discussing. So I'm supportive of accepting this fifteen thousand dollar grant with the idea that it can be used. And I did ask, can this be used for, you know, this Wellness and Civic Engagement Day with planned activities? And I was told that yes, it could be. So I think that's a wise use of that grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. No further discussion. Assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next is a grant from the Victims of Crime Act, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council January first, two thousand and nineteen, to September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, Victims of Crime Act Competitive Allocation, Additional Funding in the Amount of twenty-five thousand dollars requiring a matching fund amount of six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to the Bibb County Solicitor General in substantially the same form as attached here to as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution concerning the light extravaganza for Christmas time, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to transfer the fifty-one thousand dollars appropriated to Macon Arts Alliance Incorporated, designated for the Main Street Christmas Light Show Extravaganza two thousand and nineteen to Newtown Macon and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to authorize the appropriation of SPOSS dollars for resurfacing tennis courts at John Drew Smith Tennis Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from SPOSS bond revenues and our SPOSS bond proceeds calendar year two thousand and nineteen, Parks and Recreation John Drew Smith Tennis Line Item to provide funding for new LED lighting and the resurfacing of the tennis courts and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to adopt a new five-G article for our code for five-G wireless technology. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Chapter twenty-nine of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances by adding a new article to be known as Article eleven, Wireless Facilities and Antennas to establish an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted. And finally, is item T, which is a resolution concerning efforts to complete the Jeffersonville Road project. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission reaffirming its commitment to completing improvements to Jeffersonville Road and requesting the Macon Bibb County Administration to investigate and assess construction options, expected cost, and available funding sources relating to the improvement of Jeffersonville Road east of Recreation Road and to make a report back on the same and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval as amended to change, to change the language to shall for the mayor to direct the staff. Shall direct the staff was the amendment. And report back in ninety days. No, I'm gonna ask the county, I'm gonna ask the county attorney to read it right.
This is the amendment that was proposed and adopted in Committee of the whole.
This is the, the amendment that was proposed and adopted in Committee of the whole. Further resolve that the mayor shall direct Macon-Bibb County staff to take the following actions and report back within ninety days. And then it continues on as originally written.
Commissioner Jones, got your light on next.
That was it.
Okay. Very, very good. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next on our agenda now is new business. And this is new business that is being referred to committee for further study and evaluation. Committees will meet next Tuesday morning. That'll be the 24th, I believe, in the committee meeting room behind us here. So, nine o'clock next Tuesday. These are all of the resolutions and ordinances that have come down thus far. But there may be additional items that come down during the balance of the week. So, please check the agenda, which is published on Friday afternoon for all of the ordinances and resolutions that have been referred to the committees for further study and evaluation next Tuesday. The first is an ordinance to amend Section 5 Employee Benefits of Macon-Bibb County Policies and Procedure Manual so as to add 5.06 Wellness and Civic Engagement Leave for the Purpose of Providing Employees with Paid Time Off so as to provide opportunities to participate in activities related to wellness and civic engagement. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. And by the way, point of personal privilege, Mayor Protem, I apologize. You were trying to get something added and I just misunderstood that earlier in the evening. And what you were trying to do, I think, was to move, to take it off the table from there and put it on the agenda here. But I appreciate, appreciate your patience in withdrawing that. And sorry, I'm a little slow on the uptake. Next item is an ordinance to amend Article 7 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Macon-Bibb County to provide for the inclusion of all employees of a business location when calculating occupation taxes to provide for a public hearing. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is an ordinance to amend Chapter 25 of the Code to provide for the publication of a local subdivision design manual. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Next is item E. It's a resolution to authorize the acceptance of certain maintained roads as registered roads for public use as part of the county road system. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. That's all of the items that have come down thus far. But again, check your agenda coming out on Friday so you'll know what the committees are going to be looking at next Tuesday. With that, we are down to the final item on our agenda, which is public comments about non-agenda items. Let me start by calling on Stanley Stewart, who's been patiently waiting all this time to address us on climate change, which was not on the agenda for action tonight. And I made him wait. And I apologize, Mr. Stewart. And you're recognized for up to five additional minutes, sir, for waiting all this time to talk about climate change.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize to you all for crossing the line between agenda items and non-agenda items. Before I get into that, let me just say about Bowden Golf Course. As some of, as Ms. Lucas and different ones alluded to, Bowden Golf Course has always been an integral part of that community. My neighborhood is right across from there. Ms. Lucas's in-laws are right across from there. I believe in public-private partnerships. And I think one of the things that you all could maybe venture into is, and there again, it takes a proactive approach. You, you can't wait for them to come to you. You had to pick up a telephone. But if you approach a company like Nike or Under Armour or even the Tiger Woods Foundation and ask them if they would get involved with that golf course, not lease it, but license the name, much like you do with some of the stadiums as far as NFL, NBA stadiums are concerned, license that and pay you all for the use of the golf course. And they bring the tournaments to you guys, city, to us here in the city of Macon. That's just an idea. That's how I think, you know? You have to think about, out the box a little bit. The second thing is Little Richard's house. I talked to Richard about a week or so ago, and he asked me how things were going. And Richard thinks quite like I do. My father's side of family and my mom's side of family think this way. We don't like waiting for certain things. We don't like to come and ask for certain things. And I think going forward, I'd love to see a foundation set up. We're gonna work on that so we don't have to come to the city and ask for money and feel like we're begging for money for that. So, that, that's the second thing. Climate change. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, today was a hundred and three degrees here in the city of Macon. And it's the hottest day on record this year. And Yellowstone was thirty-six degrees. Climate change is a real thing, you know? Whether or not you, however you feel about it from a political situation, that's, that's your own personal opinion. Our nation has decided to get out of the Paris Accords. There again, that's this administration's decision. On Monday, the 24th, the United Nations has a climate summit. And at that summit, you know, individuals will, of course, talk about their ideas for climate issues. The city of Macon, I, I think y'all have done a wonderful job in terms of, I think it's the Cherry Street Ventures, if I'm not mistaken, as far as the solar panels are concerned. Is it Cherry Street? I believe it is.
Cherry Street Energy, I believe.
Cherry Street Energy. Well, I take, I applaud you for that. But we have to do more things as far as climate is concerned, climate change is concerned. And I mentioned a few minutes ago, the Arctic. The Arctic is something that is very real. It's a very real thing. As the glaciers melt, a lot of the pathways up there are becoming, Russia's taken great control of those things. And it's opening up new pathways from Russia over to Norway, really, to be honest with you. And a lot of our interests from an American standpoint are really at risk. And I know a lot of times in the city of Macon and in other areas around the country, we don't think about these national, international issues, but they are a major thing and a major concern for us. So, I wish individuals who are here and those who are maybe listening on television will contact Sanford Bishop and Austin Scott. Soon David Perdue will be the senior senator from, from Georgia as Iserson retires. Will contact you officials and let them know that you have ideas and thoughts about climate issues and about the Arctic in particular, as far, as far as the glaciers are concerned. And I really appreciate you all's time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stewart. The next, Dr. Lindsay Holliday wants to talk to us about a key to the city for someone. Now, Dr. Holliday? Thank you for your patience, sir. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off by saying that this weekend is our annual Oomoggi Indian Celebration at the Oomoggi National Historic Monument. I'll put this here. No, I can't attach it. But listening to NPR on the way home the other day and heard this story and I heard this, and I could tell this person that was being interviewed was a Creek Indian. Well, this person was Joy Harjo. Joy Harjo is the first Native American to be, to have the honor of being the United States poet laureate. And I contacted her. I wanted to get her to be maybe our honored guest here at Oomoggi Monument. Well, as you can imagine, the United States poet laureate has a busy, busy schedule. She and her, her agent in New York City asked for next year's date. And she is very interested in coming to be our honored guest. And she told me through an email exchange that she's been here numerous times for our own benefit to Oomoggi National Monument. And she considers herself to be, quote, "a granddaughter of the Macon Indian mound builders."
A granddaughter of what?
Of the mound builders.
Oh, wow.
The Indian mounds were built about a thousand years ago. And she being a native, and I'm gonna give you all this article. I've got, I don't have one for everybody. This is the interview I heard on National Public Radio. And on it, you can see that I've given you a link to the Wikipedia article about Joy Harjo and her website, joyharjo.com. J O Y H, J O Y H A R J O dot com. On audiovisual people, I'll tell you, there's a squelch adjustment that you can adjust so that it picks up our voices quicker. So, she is not only a poet, but this is, this is the best, I've got a number of her books. She's got about ten books. This is her life memoirs. Very powerful, especially a feminist. She was born in the, in, out in Oklahoma, in Indian country. An Indian girl born seventy years ago is about as low on the totem pole as you can get in America. She was not a U.S. citizen. In fact, it went, it went until the 1970s that Jimmy Carter governor changed laws, 1971. Until then, Indians could not hold land in Georgia. They couldn't vote. So, she's not only a poet and writer and philosopher, but she's also a musician. And I don't know what the appropriate way to honor her would be, but if she came here, Macon would gain more than she would. And so, if y'all will consider exploring opportunities of how to connect with her, I think that we, Macon, would gain considerably. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday, and we'll certainly keep that in mind. Next, James Harvey wants to talk to us about Third Street Park. Mr. Harvey, thank you very much. Appreciate your patience and you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
And, and if you would come up and try to speak directly into that microphone so we can hear you, please, sir.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Commissioners and the mayor and everybody here. About six weeks ago, I was here. And I complained about the drug use at Third Street Park. And soon after, right now, all gone. Because the police came through there, they did raids on that park. I think one of the officers, our kid that was involved in that, all the drug dealers are gone. All the addicts are gone from that park. My point behind that is, if the community gets together, we can run them somewhere out of our neighborhoods. I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is. However, that park right now is drug-free. I can take my grandchildren there. So, they did an excellent job. And I really want to say thank you to the, to the sheriff's office. My second item is, I live at the Dempsey. There is a sign in front of the building that says, "Loading and Unloading." I'm a hundred percent disabled. My son had to help me upstairs with my groceries and put them away for me. When he came back downstairs, he had a fifty-dollar ticket. Now, I appealed that with the linear parking that's right there next to the Dempsey. They approved the appeal. They, they squashed the ticket. My point is, if that sign can be somehow altered or changed, the people that live in the Dempsey, I mean, how it can be changed. So, I'm asking if there can be a change. Is, I was here about ten years ago. I had an issue with my sixteen-year-old daughter running away. I'm not sure if you were mayor then or not, really not. I think some of the, was city council there, not commissioner. And I spoke. I had, one of the officers that was here then helped me get my daughter back home legally. And I just feel like if the community speaks out, changes can be made. Third Street Park, when I moved back into Dempsey in January, up until a month ago, it was nothing but drugs. It was drug-infested. When I came in here and I complained about it, these are not the officers that were here. I, I don't remember who they were. However, in a month, it is now cleared. And I really appreciate that. And I want to, again, thank Bibb County sheriffs. Hope, the only thing is, this crackdown of illegal use in city parks or city areas should be done all over. I don't know what, where they can go, what they can do. However, we need to change something.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holliday.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We appreciate your patience and appreciate you being here with us.
Thank you, sir.
Mighty kind, sir. Susan Nicholson, is Ms. Nicholson still here? Susan, Susan Nicholson, she wanted to talk to us about a, a holiday for staff to vote. I assume she had, had to leave. Finally, Mr. Donald Richardson. Mr. Richardson, thank you very much, sir. We recognize you for up to five minutes for grassroots reflections.
The book of Jeremiah, chapter thirty-one. At the same time saith the Lord, will I be the God of all the families of Israel, and they shall be my people. Thus saith the Lord, the people which were left of the sword found grace in the wilderness, even Israel, when I went to cause him to rest. The Lord hath appear of O unto me saying, yea, I have loved thee with an everlasting love. Therefore, with loving kindness have I drawn thee. Again, I will build thee, and thou shalt be built, O virgin of Israel. Thou shalt be adorned with thy tabarets, and shall go forth in the dances of them that make merry. Thou shalt yet plant vines upon the mountains of Samaria. The planters shall plant and shall eat them as common things. For there shall be a day that the watchman upon the mount of Ephraim shall cry, arise ye and let us go up to Zion and to the Lord our regard. For thus saith the Lord, sing with gladness for Jacob, and shout among the chief of the nations, publish ye, praise ye, and say, O Lord, save thy people, the remnant of Israel. Behold, I will bring them from the north country, and gather them from the coast of the earth, and with them the blind and the lame, the woman with child, and her that travailth with child together, a great company shall return thither. They shall come with weeping, and with supplications will I lead them. I will cause them to walk by the rivers of waters in a straight way, where they shall not stumble, for I am a father to Israel, and Ephraim is my firstborn. Hear the word of the Lord, O ye nations, and declare it in the owls afar off. And say, he that scattered Israel, we'll gather him and keep him as a shepherd doth his flock. For the Lord hath redeemed Jacob and ransomed him from the hand of him that was stronger than he. And therefore, they shall come and sing in the highest of Zion, and shall flow together to the goodness of the Lord, for wheat and for wine, for oil, and for the young of the flock and of the herd. And their souls shall be as a watered garden, and they shall not sorrow any more at all. Then shall the virgin rejoice in the dance, both young men and old, together. For I will return their mourning into joy, and will comfort them, and make them rejoice from their sorrow. And I will satiate the soul of the priests with fatness, and my people shall be satisfied with goodness, saith the Lord. Thus saith the Lord, a voice was heard in Ramiah, lamentation and bitter weeping. Rachel weeping for her children refused to be comforted for her children, because they were not. And thus saith the Lord, refrain thy voice from weeping. And thus saith the Lord, refrain thy voice from weeping, and thine eyes from tears; for thy work shall be rewarded saith the Lord. And they shall come again from the land of the enemy; and there is hope in thine end saith the Lord, that thy children shall come again to their own border. I have surely heard ye from bemoaning himself, and thus thou hast chastised me, and I was chastised as a book, uncustom to the yoke. Turn thou me, and I shall be turned, for thou art the Lord my God. Surely after that I was returned, I repented; and after that I was instructed, I smoked upon my thigh; and I was ashamed, ye, even confounded, because I dare bear the reproach of my youth. Is Ephraim, my dear son, is he a pleasant child? For since I spake against him, I do earnestly remember him still, and therefore my bowels are troubled for him. I will surely have mercy upon him saith the Lord. Set thee up waymarks, and make thee high heaps; set thine heart toward, toward the highway. Even the way which thou wentest, turn again, O virgin of Israel, turn again to these thy cities. How long wilt thou go about, O thou black sighting daughter? For the Lord hath created a new thing, and the earth for woman shall compass a man, thus saith the Lord.
Ms. Richardson, thank you very much for sharing grassroots reflections with us. We appreciate your patience. We've reached the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.